If we could have the board members come to the table, please. I think we have some people in the hall. Okay, I typically don't start without the chair of the school board. All righty, well, it is after 11:00. Hopefully those folks in the hallway will join us shortly. We're going to get started this morning with our family engagement policy presentation. And we have a number of guests that we will ask if they can introduce themselves. Thank you guys for preparing this. As we have done in many instances before, staff often takes initiative to bring information to us to suggest that we consider it as a possible policy addition. And we appreciate that this morning. So this is the board's opportunity to take a look at this and to give some input. If you'd like, guys would like to get started. Thank you all for coming to the table. Oh, Dr. Braebrand wants to say something.
Sure, just before we begin introductions, and I'll let Dr. Duran do that. I just want this board to know where we've come. A year ago, for the first time ever in Fairfax County Public Schools' history, we surveyed our parents and families as a division. There were a lot of glows. We were really proud of some of the results that we got, but we also saw areas for growth. And one of the things that we found in the survey was that our Title I schools had better overall parent and family engagement ratings than our division overall. Why? We dug into the data like a strategic analysis should occur. And the reality is, the federal government for Title I schools has required a parent engagement policy and program for those schools for years. So the reality is, we recognized that as a division, we needed to create a division-wide parent and family engagement policy and then begin to develop a plan as a division. We're in the beginning stages of, we brought you a draft policy, and we're in the beginning stages of developing what that plan looks like. And we're wanting to get your input now as we proactively respond to that survey data from last year to build a strong division-wide, a robust division-wide family engagement plan. So we look forward to the discussion today and for your additional feedback as we get ready to develop and implement the plan for next year. So, Dr. Duran, take it away.
Just one second, one second. If I could ask all of our board members to turn their name tags like this, it just makes it a little easier when you want to ask a question, I don't have to try to recall which one it calls around. No, 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 just leave it like that. Right, Ms. Kofax is demonstrating how helpful, as our Exhibit A, I do know your names. However, when you're moving quickly, when you're moving quickly, it is sometimes helpful to be able to glance at a nameplate. Thank you.
All right, just to get started, I'm gonna have everyone actually go around and introduce themselves, and then we will get right into the presentation. And your name tag is correct, so that's good.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Leona Smith Vance, and I am the Director of Equity and Family Engagement.
Hello, Kathleen Waltz, Executive Director, Professional Learning and Family Engagement.
Good morning. Renee LaHuffman Jackson, Coordinator of Family and School Partnerships.
Good morning. Melanie Crosby Hardy, I am the Family Engagement Regional Representative for Region Four Schools.
Good morning. I'm Tracy Phillips. I'm the Principal at Robinson Secondary School.
Good morning. I am Ruth Azimi, and I work for this amazing person. I work as a parent liaison at Robinson Secondary School, and Mandy Bray as well.
Good morning. I'm Mike Waltz. I'm Chair of the Title I Parent Advisory Committee.
So, thank you for allowing us to present on Thursday night the draft family engagement policy and some ideas around a family engagement plan. Today, we wanted to focus our time on voices from our schools and as well as to address any questions or comments that you might have. So we're going to begin with a presentation from Robinson Secondary School, and we have three representatives who are going to speak from their perspectives about family engagement efforts at Robinson Secondary. Thank you.
Sorry, I didn't know I was starting. I would say, over my time as an administrator within Fairfax County Public Schools, I began my career in administration at Hayfield Secondary, which is a very different population and neighborhood community than Robinson Secondary. But in both settings, the parent liaison role has been pivotal in the developing relationships and forming bonds with families and inviting them into our school and into our community. As a first-year principal at Robinson Secondary School, I don't know that I could function in my role without my parent liaison. Ruth is pivotal in decisions and inviting community members that I wouldn't otherwise be able to reach and include within our school and the things that we do on a day-to-day basis. She provides programs, not only for Robinson, but our feeder elementary schools, and works with the parent liaisons at our surrounding pyramids as well. And so they get together and they provide resources for families. They provide opportunities in educational classes for parents. And really, even when I was introduced as principal, I think I had more parents from the Hispanic community at that presentation than any other subgroup of our population with at Robinson Secondary. And that's all due to working with Ruth. We have a very good relationship from day one. We meet on a regular basis. We talk about our goals and what we want to do as a school and as a community, and then work together to bring new ideas and innovative plans to increase our community engagement. While Dr. Braebrand said Title I schools have had that, schools such as Robinson Secondary, we assume that parents are engaged, and that's not always the case. We have to reach out and work to improve that. When I went through the interview process, that was part of the panel's questions, is what am I gonna do to improve communication and engagement for parents? And I feel as principals and administrators within Fairfax County School, our job is to partner with parents. We are essentially co-parenting children. A lot of times at the secondary level, they're spending as much time with us as they are at home with their parents. And so really, having that trust and that relationship with parents is pivotal to the success of our students and our community.
Good morning, and thank you for the opportunity to come to talk to you about the best job in the world, parent liaisons. We're just not the friendly face that you see when you come to school, but rather the force that empowers families so they can empower their own children and be successful, not only academically, but in the world. Our kids are not gonna stay in middle school or elementary school, middle school, high school. They're gonna be in the world. They're gonna go to college, they're gonna have their own families. So we want those families, the parents, to be empowered by them. But don't take me wrong, we still wanna be that friendly face that when you come to school. We want them to feel welcome. We want them to feel that they belong. We want them to feel that they have a voice from the beginning, that they approach us, that they come to school. And so that's what we do. We still the bridge between home and school. I wish we had a parent here to share with you the impact, the high impact that we do to them, how we empower them. Let me just tell you a little bit about it. A few months ago, there was a vaping session in school that was great. One of the parents who went there called me the next morning and said, "Why don't we do this in Spanish?" And I said, "How do you ambition seeing this?" And she said, "I want to take the lead. I want to be the one who does this with you." So quickly, I arranged a meeting with the SRO and the counselor, the substance and abuse counselor, and the meeting is gonna be in March 18th. So that's the kind of leadership that we are providing for our parents. Another example that I wanna give you, a few months ago, we had an event at Robinson, and one of the mothers said, "I'm gonna bring some water." Everybody is sometimes she pay to bring things like that. So I said to my husband, whom I always recruit when there is heavy lifting, "Can you come with me to get the water from her car?" And then my husband said, "Ah, nice car." And she, her reply was, "Thanks to your wife." She was the one who encouraged me to take this class, six-month course with training futures. She was the one who told me to do. Now, I work from home. I do, I'm there. I serve like seven states, and I'm home by the time my kids get home. So that's the one. Our families now serve, our parents serve as facilitators for El Futuro and other organizations. So they're doing so well, they're doing so great. Our job has involved, and our position, we win programs, we bring workshops, we organize coffee for our parents. So we can, we want to equip them so they can be more successful for their kids at school and beyond. That's the kind of relationship we have with the school, home, and the communities as well. We work closely with administrators, social workers. We work close with teachers. Everyone who is in the building, we work close with them. It's not just, oh, parents, it's everyone. At Robinson, I have the privilege to work under supervision and leadership on Ms. Phillips. She's an awesome person, not only as a person, but as a leader. When I come to her office, which is quite often, to talk about a new idea that we know that is gonna be, make a big and a huge, high impact in families, she knows that I have done my homework. She knows that it's something to empower our families. She knows that it's something that I'm going to represent her and the school well. So, and she said to me, "I love it." So I like that she supports me and she trusts me because she knows what I've done before I come to see her. Let me tell you, for experience, it's not easy to navigate the school system, especially when there is a language barrier. I came here from my country, beautiful El Salvador, and I didn't know anything. So my oldest daughter was kind of my guinea pig. So, and that, it was very hard. And I said, you know, things that I didn't know. And I said, "How, what did they mean by that when she said to me, 'I wanna do IB.'" And I said, "What is that?" So I didn't know. So, a lot of things that we don't know when we first come here. And so we wanna be that person, that bridge, that person that we do. On the other hand, we have this amazing support group here, the Engagement Family, or Parent Liaison Office, like we used to call it. Dr. Jackson, for me, is amazing. She's always there for me. And Melanie, I worked close with her because she's the representative for Region Four. She's the one who guides me. She's the one who tells me, you know, when there is resource, we can do this. Or even training, especially in technology, she's the one who say, "Okay, let's do this." So she is, this is a team effort. It's not just me or Ms. Phillips. It's a team effort. We also collaborate with different schools. We, when there is a program, something that works well for me, I share it with the other schools. I tell them what I did and how successful it was, and they do the same for me. So, I just wanna let you know that our positions, parent liaisons, we're just not a Fairfax County school system employee. We are a family. Thank you.
Well, let me just say that I am proud and honored to work with both of these ladies from Robinson because they really do, they are an example of what the connection between the school, the administration, and the parent liaison can be and what they can do. In my role as the Family Engagement Region Rep for Region Four, I work with both sides of the dual-capacity framework. I'm kind of the bridge because I support the school side in developing their family engagement programming, and I support the parent liaisons who are on the ground working with the families. I have kind of, as Leona says, a balcony view of family engagement. I keep them up to date on the latest research, the latest trends, the tools, so that we can bring those to their schools and put them into action to help our families. Some examples of things that I work with, on the parent liaison side, as Ruth said, I am kind of their guide. I'm not their supervisor. Their supervisors are in their schools, like Tracy. But I do take from our office and funnel it down to them, communicate with them regularly, providing them with events in the region and in the county that their families may find beneficial. I, we put on professional development for the parent liaisons in our region. I have two regional meetings a year, plus I have pyramid meetings because we are working very hard to build that work within the pyramid to support each other. And one particular thing to note is Ruth is one of just two parent liaisons in the Robinson Pyramid. Most of the elementary schools do not qualify for one. So she and Peadad, who is at Terra Center Elementary, do work hard to get that information out to the feeder schools as well. And they work with West Springfield, Lake Braddock, all of those pyramids to really come together and build their strengths. I'm making connections across the other regions as well. Our, my other family engagement reps, there's one of us in each region. We collaborate a lot to make sure that what's going on in this region that's working well, we can communicate to our region so that we can, again, build the strengths across the county. On the school side, this is an example, again, of one that's really working, but there are many schools who aren't quite there in terms of building those relationships. So part of my job is to make sure that the administrators get the information that they need to find out what their parents need, to help them build strategies and plans to better engage their parents and connect them with what their children are learning. We have professional development for staff, everything from leading the front office and a welcoming front office professional development to an entire staff presentation on Family Engagement 101, which is basically, where do we start? Where do we look? What do we need to do to really build this? I also do welcoming atmosphere walkthroughs, which are a chance for schools to bring in members of their community, to look at their schools with fresh eyes and see what are they seeing that we're not seeing, and what can we do with that information to make our schools more engaging, more effective in communication and outreach, and really connect parents to what's going on in the school and what's going on in the classroom, what their children are learning. One thing that's very important to me is really building the parent liaison's abilities and knowledge and competencies to, as Ruth said, their job is evolving quite a lot. We're working with them to expand beyond just their language group and support all of the parents in the community because, as Dr. Braebrand said, all parents really need to be engaged. We assume sometimes that they're engaged, but studies show that they aren't necessarily engaged. So that's one thing that myself and my fellow FERS are really working on, with Renee's support, Kathleen and Leona's support, is to expand the competencies of the parent liaisons and expand their outreach to better support all parents in the county.
Well, thank you so much to Tracy, Ruth, and Melanie for sharing your perspectives on family engagement. Clearly, this is a passion for all of you that came through in your remarks today, and we appreciate the work that you do. And now we're gonna move on to Mike Waltz. Mike represents our parents and is also our Title I Parent Advisory Committee Chairperson. Mike, thank you for being here today.
Thank you, Kathleen. I could, as some of you may know, I could talk quite a while, but I have been limited to a few minutes today. And I will say to a few minutes. So I wanna focus on a few areas that the T-PAC has been addressing. One is the National Family School Partnership Standard and speaking up for every child and providing access for every student. This past year, I think it's 2018, 19, in our school board report, we recommended, in support of what the Advanced Academic Advisory Committee had done several years, a full-time and culturally proficient advanced academic resource teacher, which gives administrators the budget flexibility to not have to use the resources they had previously used for their position in other areas of need. We also have been exploring how to increase communication with families and how to improve their knowledge of advanced academics so that whether the child's receiving Level One through four services, that they're aware of it, they can advocate for it, and, you know, have a discussion or conversation with school leadership to make sure that their children are being, you know, stimulated and they're intellectually challenged. But beyond just the advanced academic program, it's to make sure, and we hope that the AART will help in that, making sure that advanced academics, as I've said before, is not just a program, it's a philosophy. And we need to make sure that children at all levels, wherever they are, are receiving access to that. Now, family engagement being a shared responsibility is school and family. And right now, the school, I would say even before, school has always been taking efforts and, you know, performing responsibilities, but parents, the family side of it probably hasn't been, and that's in large part due to lack of knowledge and awareness about it. And even the advancements the T-PAC has made in the past few years, we always had good discussions at our meetings, but we didn't necessarily have a clear vision. And part of that was just the size of our group. It was never a consistently large gathering of folks where we could get enough conversation and things moving forward. And looking at how the committee is populated, it starts at the administrator level. And we had to look and see whether the administrators themselves were as familiar with our function and purpose. It didn't seem to be so. One of our recommendations two years ago was to have a principal or advice principal attend at least one meeting so they could become familiar with our process. We've had, since that time, just, every meeting, we've had principals there. And I think Title I Office has done a really good job at having separate meetings with principals to educate them on the role of the T-PAC. Instantly, it's made an impact. We've had larger, we average like 20 to 30 people at our meetings, and that's pretty good for a Tuesday night from 7:00 to 8:30. We offer childcare. I think that that's a helpful support for parents who need somewhere, you know, to place their kids. And we have, we've been working with the reps to facilitate greater communication with their principals. And, you know, the level of communication depends on their relationship, how well they know each other, so the dynamic is not the same for everybody. It can be an email, it can be a phone call, it can be a sit-down. But working on filtering that information down through the school, you know, and it's been a, it's been a process. Some schools are probably able to accomplish it faster than others. But making it a standard practice, I think, will help create, you know, a stronger bond and more shared responsibility. The parents will be able to share more in that in terms of decision-making, once they're aware that it's not just, you know, school would like you to have a voice, you're required to have parent, you know, perspective and input in decision-making.
Thank you, Mike. And last summer, we sent a team to the National Family Engagement Conference in Reno, Nevada, to present some of the family engagement strategies that we employ in Fairfax County. And Mike joined the group as a parent representative and did an amazing job, so thank you again. And now we open it up to any questions or comments that you may have.
Okay, we have one person on the list, so if you wanna stand your name tag up if you want to be on the list. We have Karen, our chairwoman, Karen Corbin Sanders. We had you on the list. All right.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your presentation here today. I also very much appreciated the presentation on Thursday night. Couple of comments and then some questions. One, to my colleagues, I urge you that if you have not attended a Title I Advisory Committee meeting, please do. I used to have the honor of being the liaison to that group, and the work of this advisory committee is absolutely sine qua non. And every time that I attended a meeting, I came away having learned something. So I urge my new board members and existing or previous board members to do so. Secondly, I have a question, and the question is, how do we ensure that our exceptional students with disabilities' needs are addressed by both our parent liaisons and our AARTs? I'm gonna stop, I'd love to have that question.
So if I understand the question correctly, it's about meeting the needs of our families of students with special needs and AAP who are in AAP programs?
It's two questions.
Okay.
One is for, in the AAP program, so how do we actually make sure that they are represented? Because we have a voice in the building that is looking beyond a student's disabilities to look at to look at all of their capabilities and ability to succeed and fully participate. And then the second is, how do we ensure, because there is often a feeling of frustration and not feeling fully appreciated and understood by parents of students who have special needs. And so what role do our parent liaisons play in reaching out to families of students who have been identified or may not have been identified but need some extra supports?
So I can say one thing that we do is our Parent Resource Center supports our families with special needs, and they support the parent liaison work in terms of at the school level of how we can support schools. Each week, we communicate opportunities for, opportunities to build the capacity of all families, especially families with students with special needs, and a host of areas of workshops that are provided. We also do direct outreach at the school level through our Parent Resource Centers in collaboration with our Parent Resource Center. We've done, over the last two years, we've really built on that collaboration because it was not as strong. But Mary Beth Harrison Cunningham has built that work that we do support our individual schools throughout the division through the Parent Resource Center.
And I appreciate that, but that seems to be a push-out model. And what I'm worried about is that, especially for our families that are feeling overwhelmed, that we need a pull-in and hug model and providing those supports.
Another thing that we've done is we've provided a lot of technological opportunities, like our YouTube, so that families can have some offerings at their own time. And I think Tracy is going to talk about something specific that they're doing at Robinson.
I think really the key piece to it, and working with Ruth, and we have families that have concerns, right? We have students that are within our special education program. We also, as Ruth mentioned, her own daughter went through our IEP program, and she had to learn along the way. I think that what we have to do, and we struggle to do, and work strive, actually not struggle, we strive to do, is to reach out to those families that have concerns. And if we, as the school staff, are feeling like, oh, this family's not sure, they're on the fence, they need some support, we go talk to Ruth, and Ruth reaches out to those families, and vice versa. Our families readily contact her and say, I'm not, I don't know what's happening in this IEP process, I don't know what my child's options are. And so then Ruth will then get with the IEP team, and we work together with that family and try to make sure that everybody's needs are met through the process. I think that we are at an advantage, like I said, because Ruth went through it and understands the challenges of our parents, and so she is able to recognize those easily from her own personal experience and then address them with families as we see them. And our staff, Ruth is a pivotal member of our staff, so our staff goes to her with things that they see with families as well.
And so the second piece of that question was, how do we articulate cultural proficiency when we talk about the cultural support to students with special education needs?
Special ed is a very tender situation in the Hispanic culture because we don't know. We have in our school, I grew up in El Salvador, as I mentioned, we didn't have a special ed. So it's so difficult sometimes to bring the subject to the parents. So it's great when they are, they call me usually, they call me, they have a local screen and they don't know what it's all about. So then I come in and I said, I want to serve, I'm going to be at the meeting, not as an interpreter, but as a parent liaison, because we can serve as either, but I like to be there as a parent liaison so I can better support the families and make them feel comfortable that it's not a disability that they have to be ashamed of, but rather a strong, you know, a different situation that is for the parents, for the kids to be successful, that everybody learns differently, that everybody, I learn different than Tracy or something. So we make them feel comfortable so they can, they realize that having an IP or special ed, it's not a, you know, it's not shame or anything, or the kids differently, it's just, you know, making sure that we get educated, me as also in the parents as well.
You raise a very important point there, which is that different cultures address the needs or recognize the needs of students with special education needs differently. And so what I would like as a next step is to have, as we develop our parent engagement action plan, to have very specific language and actions associated with ensuring that the needs, that we engage parents and families of students with special education needs, and that we ensure that our cultural proficiency work includes the needs of special ed students.
Hi, I'd like to, I agree, that's where we need to go. I am very proud to have these folks share their great practices, and I'll say with candor, we have a lot, we have a ways to go. There's a reason we would like to engage and create a plan. We are not engaging in all of these high-leverage strategies consistently. So that's where we are now in recognizing that we have work to do. When we look at our survey, the first survey, there was a lot of celebrations around welcoming families. But there was a lot about how do we actively do two-way communication? And a lot of our communication is one-way. I'm a parent in FCPS as well, so I understand, I never take that hat off. My four children matter a lot to me as well. So that is why we are here to talk about what are the best practices happening across our division that we can scale and say, this is what every child in FCPS deserves because they belong here, they matter to us. So that's where we are now. As we listen to these voices from the field, what can we learn and scale that out? Especially around some of our marginalized populations and our populations where their voices are not being heard, whether that's ability, race, culture. And when we talk about the cultural, as I shared last week, we mean all of those groups. One of our, to share about cultural proficiency, so we have our modules, which I'm so excited that you will all be partaking in soon. And we also have what we call four-day cohorts. So in the cohort, a school goes deeper and they spend four days, they do a deep dive. Within those cohorts, we further define culture to include ability, to include sexual orientation. We go very deep, and then we turn it into culturally responsive teaching. So what does it mean to teach in culturally responsive ways? And that's why we're here today to think, what language would you like us to include in this policy that we are following the will of the school board as well to be inclusive of all of our families? So we recognize these are celebrations, and we're so happy to hear from them, and yes, we have work to do, and we're ready to engage in that work with you.
Thank you, Ms. Corbett Sanders. And the next person is Ms. Sizemore Heiser.
Thank you, I appreciate the time. Ms. Corbett Sanders brought up many of my concerns around students with disabilities. I would really like to, first of all, I did some research this weekend. I came, I found the School District of Philadelphia's Family Engagement Plan, which is extremely extensive. So one of my first, and it's very, I thought very, and I looked at Louisiana, I looked at almost all the ones that you listed on your chart, I really looked at a lot of these engagement plans. One of my concerns really was that we keep, over and over again, our plan mentoring linguistic. And to me, that sends a real sharp message that what we're looking at, which is an important piece, don't get me wrong, we've got a long, large growing number of families where English is their second language, but it sends an implication by omission that that's what this policy is for. For example, Louisiana specifically stated, if I can find it in my stacks of policies I printed out this weekend, diversity and varying abilities. We're very clear on stating abilities. So when we say, at the school meeting the other night, where this is based on research and best practices, it took them about 10 minutes to find a policy that stated abilities within it. So I do think, I appreciate the sharing of the best practices, I appreciate the sharing of the knowledge, but what I'm hearing is a reactive with the community. I'm hearing that we have YouTube videos, it's a hands-off, we have the Parent Resource Center, you know, and when parents bring us concerns, we talk to them. I'm sorry, did you have something?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I would like, as a next step, some proactive systematic engagement plans with a broader sense of community than just linguistic. I appreciate what you're saying. I come from a culture, I understand the cultural aspects of disability. My culture was very similar to what I grew up with, but I think that specifically needs to be addressed, is the intersectionality that some of our parents come to our school with. I'd like to see a next step around systematic processes around intersectionality. I would also love to see a next step, I love the survey, and I appreciate what you're saying, Dr. Braebrand, that the survey was new and it's great. I would love to see the data disaggregated by family sort of status to see, you know, what's the experience of families who are from different cultures? What's the experience of families with special needs children? So we can better deep dive into where are we having issues around engagement? So that was kind of some of my statements. But I would love to see in our policy, the Philadelphia policy had very specific examples, student councils, I know some of our schools are doing this, family, parent councils, things. I would love to see at a broader level some of these suggestions. So as a next step, maybe some best practices we can share within our policy.
Okay, so thank you. I really do appreciate this conversation. And one of the things that I would say, and I think, Dr. Braebrand, you may have said it earlier, is that when we implemented the family engagement survey, we know that the data showed that we're really good at doing to families rather than engaging with families. So we know that's an area of growth for all of us within FCPS. As far as the language in the policy is concerned, we are more than happy to add whatever you would like. This is the school board's policy. And then some of the other items that you have addressed would really be a great part of our plan, the plan of action that we would take following the development of the policy. So get the policy in place, and then our action plan. And we shared a couple of strategies that we had identified on Thursday night, but we can certainly add to that. We can certainly entertain any other ideas that you might have. As far as the family engagement survey being disaggregated, at our first administration, we worked very closely with K-12 Insight and the researchers from K-12 Insight. And at that point, they said to increase the number of participants in the survey, they suggested we not ask for demographic data. But that's something that we would certainly reconsider as we look at administering the survey again in the spring of 2021.
Thank you so much for this information. As someone who's worked very closely with parent liaisons, thank you, because you definitely do bridge the gap in terms of accessing some of the folks we really want to hear from at the school level. So I understand and appreciate the magnitude of the work that you do for our schools. I have two questions. One of the things that I heard very clearly was that the role of the parent liaison would be broadened in terms of accessing, I guess, other groups besides the language group. I also realize that there is inherent trust that is sometimes built when you have someone of that same culture who can easily speak your language and access your culture, and you just have that built-in trust. How will this be addressed if we are expanding beyond the language group? What is your thinking at this point in terms of trying to build that same trust so that people feel comfortable in reaching out and then coming to you for support? That's my first question.
So I'm going to answer part of that, and then I'm going to let Melanie speak to that. Our first priority currently is building the capacity of our parent liaisons by providing a lot of professional development opportunities, because our parent liaison program was designed on that cultural relationship and that language. So we're shifting the model around all families, and it's going to take a lot of support and professional development from our office. And we offer those offerings each month, and we're really working hard also to implement the dual-capacity framework that's set by the Department of Education around how we will approach family engagement in Fairfax. So focusing on that professional development piece, because it's going to be a culture shift within FCPS.
Okay, I'd just like to share a little of my personal experience. In addition to being the family engagement representative, I'm also a parent liaison, just five hours a week over at Lena Elementary in Region 3. I've been there for 16 years. I only speak English. And I have worked hard to build trust across the community over there. I'm the face, as the parent liaison, I'm the face, the first face that they see. I give tours, I'm at PTA meetings, I give workshops. Parents come in for a tour and they say, I'm worried that my child may have special needs, how does the school handle that? Or, English is not our first language, how does the school handle that? And I'm kind of the clearinghouse. I make those connections within the school, I let the other administrators and other people know that this is a family that might have these concerns. When we need language support, I do share my job with another Melanie who speaks Spanish. And together, we really can connect with our community across the board. It's not always easy. Finding interpreters when you need them is extremely difficult. We try to teach those parents, to get those parents into the school through Parents as Educational Partners or other types of programs to help them understand the school and learn the basic English skills that they need. So there are ways that we can broaden that support. As Renee said, the way the program began was language-based, and it's very hard to break out of that because our schools need that language support, especially with interpreters being so difficult to find. But we are working with our, all of our, all of the family engagement representatives are working with our parent liaisons to help them break out of that silo and develop the confidence and the strategies. Really, we're working with our administrators too, to help them create a new model that reaches out across the board to parents, to build that trust with all parents regardless of culture. And part of that is being the face of the school culture, a trusting, supportive culture that really doesn't speak any language other than we're here to help and we want to be engaged with you.
One other thing to add, Dr. Anderson, we did change the job description in 2018. So for the first time, our parent liaisons now have a job description. So a lot of things are evolving and changing with our programming.
At Robinson, I'm going to say that we are a little bit ahead. We do resource first, family resource first, not only for Hispanic, Korean, but for the whole school. So we disseminate to other schools so they can come. And we have, you know, Korean organizations, we have Hispanic, we have all kinds of organizations there, and it's for everyone, not only for that. Also, a fun part of Robinson, we do an international show that that is for everyone. We have more than 40 countries represented last year. They showcase their culture, they showcase their, you know, talent and everything. The parents from all over the world come, you just see, you come to one of our international, you've been there. And everybody rooting for their kids in their own way, doing different noises or sounds, whatever, but that's how they do, and that's their culture, and that's mine and everybody else. So there are two things that we do first at Robinson, it's not geared only to one community, to everyone, and the international show, that is for everyone, so I think.
The other challenge, Dr. Anderson, is that as we redesign and rethink the role of the parent liaison, the funding that we have for this has really been targeted around, and even the formula around applying language support, so from a linguistic perspective. So as we think about even the new job description, the professional development, this policy, the plan itself, which are just almost like entryway to this new culture of how we support families, we're limited still in the reality of the fact that the amount of hours that are provided and the formula for that is specifically. So what we've done, we do have a translation office where we do have ability for parents to receive translation through there, so partnering, and that's in the Department of Special Services. So looking at that, we've begun to think about how can we complement that, but even then, it's still going to be a challenge. So to your question, it's a couple of things. It's one, how do we restructure the way we allocate the hours and not just from the lens of looking at linguistic, which is what we had. And we do have to pay attention to that, though. And where there are holes, how do we work with our translation office to make sure that there's resources and support available to families for various meetings or opportunities where they need that support? And then the last thing, as you heard, is the professional learning opportunity. And then the last thing, as you heard, is the professional learning opportunities through the job description and the focus to get people to build their capacity. Because prior, many parent liaisons were there and provided services to help with parents from a cultural perspective. So they have that. But if it's a different culture, yes, you know, we heard from Melanie that she's connected after 16 years, but that's not something innate for everyone and it doesn't happen overnight. It's not an organic process. You have to learn, how do you build up your cultural proficiency, cultural responsive skills to work above and beyond and build that trust with other folks? So that's where we're headed. We're not there yet. We have some lights of example here with us today, but we have many, many areas where we have to move beyond that if we're going to really meet what we're saying in this new policy.
Thank you. That's actually a great segue into my next question. This is a huge role. There is a lot that is already happening and there seems to be a lot that will be added onto the role so that we can have as broad as, as broad an outreach as possible and to impact the most number of students as possible. How is this work going to be differentiated? Or how would it, how will it look for schools that have few to little parent liaison hours? Who's going to be responsible for schools without parent liaisons for this work? That we all are agreement is important.
So that is the magic question. No, we're really trying to look at a holistic approach because currently we have 30 schools that do not have parent liaisons and our office is supporting the work of all schools. So we're doing it now, but it's really organic. But as we redefine and redevelop our parent liaison, I mean, our family engagement plan, because the plan is the action steps to create consistency. Our staff working with all schools and the goal would be a parent liaison at every school, but we have to, you know, look within reality around how we will support all schools and the work.
So to add to that, we are thinking about creatively using our fiscal resources. And I think that what Renee is saying is as we recognize the challenges of people working hourly, and so this is all hourly funded. We do have some liaisons who are on contract. We also have our fantastic family engagement regional reps as a resource as well. So the plan, which was, is sort of definitely in the draft stage, we were looking, where can we provide some consistent supports to all schools using our central office folks? So that's where we talked about our, systematizing the welcoming walkthrough so that all schools access that, whether they have a parent liaison or not, creating a cycle for those. Right now, it's voluntary. Right now, it's opt-in. Schools can request a welcoming walkthrough. We want to shift that model to say, this is an important part of being reflective, is to engage your community in walking the building with you, regardless of the supports you have in your building, and we will support that from a central office lens. The second piece we would like to do, again, once the policy, we will continue to work on this. Another idea we have is engaging all front office staff in some professional development around cultural responsiveness. And we can be more explicit to the feedback we're getting today around what we mean by that and define that a little better. But that's another place where we, as central office, can begin to chip away at this, given the resources we have. How can we have some consistent front office guidelines? Again, you walk into 200 schools and you may be greeted 200 different ways. You may call 200 schools and you may get the way you're greeted on the phone may different, maybe in 200 different ways. And so where can we provide some consistency and also work with our school-based administrators? So these are the things we're going to be doing centrally from a division level to say, where can we start to build consistency in providing some, regardless of if you have a parent liaison? Now, I will add to Renee's point, in a perfect dream world, everyone will have one. And that is what we would hope one day. And we're thinking, what can we do now to support schools? And those are our three big areas, is that front office support, building our leader, our school-based leaders so that they have some consistent practices, and also the welcoming walkthrough for everybody, not just those that have a parent liaison and not just those that ask for it. And we welcome any additional feedback you might have around what we can do consistently. The fourth piece that wasn't, that we shared on Thursday, was volunteering opportunities. That's another way to engage and do with versus to. You can call, again, 200 schools and ask to volunteer and you might get 200 different responses of what it means to be a volunteer in that building. And so if we really want to remove barriers and authentically create partnerships, it should be easier to get in schools, and in some schools it is. And in some schools, perhaps that trusting relationship hasn't been built yet. How can we support that school in making that happen faster for them?
Thank you. Just one point of clarification. For schools without parent liaisons, what I think I'm hearing is, if we build up the front level, the front office staff and they're able to respond appropriately to parents who are coming in, but for further action, they reach out to your office? Because we know how intensive and laborious that work could be to really get into the background. So they'll reach out to you all for additional support?
Yes, that would be our regional representatives. Spend a lot of time supporting schools without parent liaisons. Melanie, if you want to speak to that.
I have eight schools that don't have parent liaisons. And some of them I have great relationships with because the administration gets it, understands what family engagement is, understands what high-impact strategies are, and finds other people in the building to work with them. I work with counselors at some schools. I have one school that this year has done, the family engagement PD has done a parent panel, has done a welcoming walkthrough and is, has presented all of that information to the community. That's an example of one school that is without a parent liaison that really is trying to build that family engagement. I have other schools I have never been in. I have reached out to administrators and gotten no response. That's because, you know, it's difficult to find the time to do, as you said, the very labor-intensive work that exists. So it's across the board, really, I mean, it's a broad spectrum of how I work with those schools. We work, oh, sorry.
So we know that family engagement is really big-picture work and it is going to take all of us, not just parent liaisons. We are so blessed to have parent liaisons in Fairfax County Public Schools. We also need to build the capacity of our school staff and we're working with our principals to provide professional development. And our goal is really eventually to have a family engagement team at each of our schools so that it's about all of us. It's not just about one person leading the charge for family engagement. It cannot just be about the parent liaisons. The parent liaison's jobs keep getting bigger and bigger and we need to be sure that everybody is focused on family engagement. So one of the things that we've done recently is to, within our school improvement and innovation plans, have an opportunity for schools to reflect some of their family engagement survey data and then build goals around that data. So we're looking at a multifaceted approach that includes our parent liaisons, but includes a lot of our other stakeholders across the division.
Thank you. And speaking of stakeholders, my last, the last part of my question is, as we have PTAs and PTOs who really are communities of folk who've built a real investment into the school and they are very much engaged. Not that this happens anywhere here, but there are a lot of opportunities for those groups to be really exclusive. And it's hard for parents who speak a second language, who don't know the culture, and, you know, pick your variable. It's really hard sometimes for them to access those groups because it's such a tightly knit, closed group. What is your work, if any, that will be done to engage that community, to be more inclusive, to do the reach out rather than waiting for people to come in? Because sometimes they won't. So, and that's such, that's an area that could be leveraged so significantly to engage parents and often it can be closed to certain parents. So I'd love to hear your thoughts on that and thank you.
Thank you, absolutely. I would agree that even as a former principal recently from a school, the PTA was not inclusive of our student body. And I don't think it was intentional, it was just the way, that was a culture within itself. Who is in the PTA? Who has a voice? So some of our long-range plans, again, this is sort of where we plan to start, but as we, as we move on to sort of year two and three, the idea around each school having a family engagement team that creates goals specific. And one of, some of the ideas we have that we're communicating on is how we create sort of parent advisory committees at the school level that are inclusive and diverse of all families. That's something I did as a principal and it was very powerful for me to move it out of the PTA. I think our PTAs do a wonderful job of bridging the gap in some ways. And we need to do intentional actions and I think that's what we're here to say. We recognize we need to be more intentional. How can we scale these kinds of activities and strategies across all schools? And where might we start? A parent advisory group at every building would be the dream. And so we're building the capacity now of our different stakeholders, whether it's administrators, teachers, even at the Title I meeting. So I get the honor of also serving as the director of Title I. And so we meet with our principals four times a year. We have intentionally, of those four times this year, two of them have been solely focused on creating a caring culture. And so also approaching that from a cultural proficiency lens. So this is also a mindset shift and decision-making that school leaders have to do, to think about, who am I engaging? Which voices are not being heard? How can I get those voices in? How can I co-share some decisions? So we're definitely approaching it from multiple lenses and we know we have work to be done around that.
I also want to speak to that really quickly. Being a former PTA president myself, the function of PTAs generally needs to change. It's a lot of focus on event planning and fundraising and not around student success, academic performance, and building that bond between the family and the school. That's one distinction we make from the T-PAC, how it differs from a PTA. But they should work together, not apart. And I think the T-PAC can help inform the work of PTAs to support student success more meaningfully than they do right now.
And Robinson, I'm going to speak just for the Hispanic community. The Hispanic community, the parents at Robinson have assigned a parent who speaks English and feels uncomfortable to attend the PTSO meetings. So she can bring it to theirs and say what was spoken at that meeting. It's a little, something very small, but is perhaps later on, somebody else is going to come and so.
I think, Dr. Ivy, did you want to comment?
I was just going to say that this group recently came to a RAS EP meeting to discuss with the regions how the regions can partner in a better way with the family engagement staff, particularly in identifying where it's working well in the regions and what schools really need some intentional support and direction in this area. And so while these, one aspect is having specific goals in the school improvement plan, but in other ways, what practices are definitely needed to be implemented in specific schools and partnering together.
Thank you, Dr. Ivy. Next, we have Mr. Frisch.
One more comment from Renee.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see the.
I was also going to say that I serve on the Executive Board for Fairfax Council of PTA to try to build the collaboration, the support around family engagement so that it's a little bit more inclusive.
Mr. Frich?
Thank you for all of the work that went into this presentation. During our school board meeting last week, there was discussion about the outreach to stakeholders. I'm curious if there was any formal outreach to communities like religious minorities or if any conversations were had with FCPS Pride, GLSEN, PFLAG, or any groups representing LGBT parents and families?
So the groups that you mentioned are represented in our Equity Stakeholders Group, which we meet with regularly. Our next meeting is on March 5th and at that time, we'll have an opportunity to engage them in some dialogue as well as their feedback around the policy and the plan.
But not in formulating the policy and the plan, like these other conversations?
Formulating the plan. So the policy is really, at this point in time, a draft and we're looking to the school board to help us to inform the language within the policy. So it's really about what strategies, what action steps are we going to take as a result of this policy to ensure that we have deep levels of engagement across our division?
But to further answer that, so yes, the plan, which is following the policy, that has just not even begun, it's just a total draft. And that is the goal of all the various groups that have not been met with. Some have been given some feedback. But all of that work around the plan, which is what, similar to Ms. Seizmohizer who talked about the Philadelphia policy, that was actually their plan. I was there at the time and helped write that as well as Renee Lofman-Jackson. So that was where we did a policy where we had a very high-level, simple, basic. And then we met with groups and it actually took almost over a year, to be honest with you, maybe a little longer. So to your question, we will be meeting and engaging with folks on that plan to develop and formulate the plan, not just give feedback. The policy is something separate and I don't know if you're asking about that, but I'm speaking to the plan.
Well, I'm curious how a group qualifies to be part of the initial conversations versus being held off until they're discussing the plan.
So we're still having ongoing conversations. I understand that we've already met with some groups and some groups we haven't met with yet. And it's a matter of time and capacity to hold meetings with such a large group of stakeholders.
Okay. I would just say that I have spoken with transparents and same-sex couples who are not comfortable, not always uncomfortable necessarily, but not necessarily made to feel comfortable when they're in our schools. So that should be part of the considerations when we think about these things beyond what we would traditionally think of as culture or language boundaries or ability boundaries. We should be thinking of these things as well. I realize that there are lots of conversations to be had when developing these types of policies and plans. But if there's known to be a sensitivity to the exclusion of communities, it would behoove us to preemptively respond to that sensitivity by including these voices in our conversations. Because I've only been on the school board for a month and a week or something like that. And in two presentations we've had, there have been concerns about whether families with students with disabilities have been included early enough in the conversation. I can tell you that if those families are left out, then usually other families are left out of the early conversations too. So maybe we just need a list that, that these are the folks that we talk to in advance of rolling these things out to the school board so that we don't have to answer the same battery of questions every time.
Thank you. A list would be very much appreciated. Thank you for that. And, you know, we will continue to reach out to our groups. And I want to say that when we had our sessions with analyzing the results from the K-12 Insight Family Engagement Survey, we did include many groups. I don't have that list in front of me right now, but there were many groups who were included and involved in looking at the data, helping to make sense of the data and thinking through next steps.
Two things I'd like to just make a comment on. Carl, I think you're exactly right. We need to standardize our engagement process for when we reach out on policies to groups. We can do that. What I'd like to do, versus you all having to try to think it through, is we could bring you a draft of what that standardization of external stakeholder looks like and then you can go, mm, you're missing that. That way, we only, we bite this apple one time and then you know any other new policy has the board's support about who we've reached out to before it gets to you. So you're right on the money, I think, with that. The other, I want to just, goodness, I knew what the other one was. The other, as I look at the policy, which is a draft, what I hear from the board already, and we'll hear what other board members have to say, we need to really expand the definition, really add meat to the bone. It's a start, but it's, people need to see themselves in the definition of the family engagement policy or all this work and the plan that we're going to do, people are going to go, well, that's not for me. And the nugget of nuggets, to just tell you, our family engagement policy for 20 years has been focused on Title I schools because there was no policy for the division. And our parent engagement was through a parent liaison that was mostly focused on language. So we had economically disadvantaged in language. All these other categories, I mean, just being real, we got a lot of growing to do. So we need to start to. to do. So, we need to start to have a systematic approach to family policy engagement and this is the beginning. And we're bringing you in and I always, I'm still maturing as a superintendent too. Do we bring you in when it's all done or bring you in at the very beginning? We're really bringing you in at the very beginning and your feedback is already informing what we're going to do moving forward, both with the policy and the plan. I expect we'll have another work session, I imagine, to finalize this up, both the plan and the actual policy and its definition and application. Thank you.
I just wanted to share a piece in reference to the transgender situation and just, and I don't know if this is the appropriate venue or not. I can say at the school-based level, we had an incident last week. We had, my AA was helping check out students. Within a period of a couple hours, three transgender parents came to check out their child. The way that our sys system is set up, my AA doesn't know any different. And she says, oh, you're here to pick up Noah. And the parent says, no, Nicole. And because the way the names are listed in the system, the nickname for that child is on a separate screen. So, it's not showing to the people that are the front office staff and the responders at that time. So, if we can look at that, that would be helpful for our office staff and the people that don't specifically know the child within a building.
Thank you. Ms. McLaughlin?
I want to first thank Dr. Braybrand. I'm so glad I came after you spoke because I was furiously scribbling notes and concerned about the policy draft itself. So, I do think we're going to need to do a lot more work. And when you asked about when to bring the board in, I would just say on any policy, the board needs to be brought in immediately. I want to save and maximize your own staff's time. I don't know who worked on this, but it doesn't actually make sense to me even how the board didn't first have the conversation. If it's our policy, we should have had the conversation first on what we're trying to do here. So, I appreciate everybody's work in this and I'm so thankful, especially to see my Robinson community here today. Thank you for bringing voice to such a great school. But I just, at a macro level, it's really important, whether it's this policy or any policy. It's one of our crucial roles as board members. So, I would have liked to have seen that.
One nugget, Ms. McLaughlin, if I can share, I think when we, I think when we brought the family engagement survey results, it was one of those work sessions where we had that and the draft policy and we really never got to going over the draft policy. We had it, but we didn't go over it and we really ran out of time and we recognized we needed to bring it back. So, we didn't get that opportunity.
Right.
That's correct. And it was posted then and when, at the end, we ran out of time. So, we were told to go ahead and continue to work with that and then we would be scheduled to come back at a later work session with the chairs and this was when it was scheduled. But at that work session, it was posted, we did put it up there and we did say if anyone had feedback or questions, we weren't going to present it, but to please let us know if you had feedback. And we did get some feedback. Ms. Kizgamar, I believe, gave us some and a couple others. So, we did do that and it's been quite a while because that was last, the beginning of the school year with the family survey. So, it was provided previously and asked for feedback.
So, I think that's where the challenge is, that again, cart before the horse. So, there shouldn't have been a draft policy at all. When the family engagement survey was brought to us, we should have, we should have had the conversation about what is the engagement survey telling us. And then, the board members could have talked about what are the different challenges. One of the concerns I have with this policy, other board members are talking about the different communities. I mean, I just finished being a Fairfax County parent for 18 years and I can tell you that it surprised me as a PTA officer, board member, and highly engaged parent, the experiences that we went through as a family. And what I still hear from our other families. And so, Scott, I think you captured it best, which is this draft policy needs to reflect all of our communities. There is so much conversation right now talking about cultural responsiveness. Talk to families where English language isn't an issue. Socioeconomic poverty is not an issue, but how do parents feel this division wants to authentically partner with them? I would say it's just a global desire. And so, I want to make sure that the policy captures that. The other thing is that my colleagues know, I'm very much driven by research and data. I don't really find that the information posted to the public and to the board for today's work session works well for me or for the public. I would have liked to have seen links to all of the policies that you looked at, all the different school divisions. I would have liked to have had an actual report because clearly, staff has worked very hard on this. But, a PowerPoint is not how board members can make informed decisions. The public can't appreciate all the hard work your staff has done. I really would say, as my closing remarks, we've got to get away from PowerPoints as being how the board and the public benefits from the hard work your staff is doing because that's not how you learn. There's so many slides here I just kept making notes on. What is this based on? What is this telling us from? And I'll have a go back, but.
We were putting you down for a go back, Ms. McLaughlin. Thank you. We have Ms. Maron. For members, I would just point out that this was scheduled till 12:30. We started a little late. Everybody wasn't in the room. So, technically, we should be finishing up at 12:45, just information's sake.
Yes. Well, thank you. I'm really glad that Dr. Braybrand summarized some of the things that he did. And, you know, I'm a longtime fan of parent liaisons and the work that you do. And I think I would just like to see a much higher elevation of what engagement really means. It's really, you know, it's good to know the historical context about Title I and cultural needs, but like, we're so far beyond that. And so, for me, listening to this and on Thursday and reading, I just don't see like that, that higher lens of what engagement really means, especially for students with disabilities. What does inclusion really look like for a family who has a child with severe behavioral issues? How do you communicate with that parent when they can barely make it out of the house sometimes? Things I'm wondering about is family types, right? I'm really glad that we're using the word family engagement and not parent engagement. What does it look like to communicate with a single parent, with a, with a single-parent family, with two working parent families? How does that communications look? Again, it feels very heavily driven through the parent liaison from what you've presented. Now, if that's a role that we want to expand, then I'd love if you could please, in this time when we're looking at the budget, please tell us what would it cost to get a parent liaison in every school at the level that you're talking about? And/or, what would it take to provide the professional development to the other staff in the school buildings to the level that you're envisioning? This is the exact time to inform us about that so we can make those informed decisions. I also, you know, we heard some public comments on Thursday and received some follow-up in talking about our early childhood community. And we're only looking at K-12 here from the survey, but, you know, as I shared with Dr. Braybrand, we're talking about school readiness. We're talking about everything from orientation, registration, the walkthroughs, the tours. You know, that is ripe for parent engagement, for parents who are first time, you know, family member sending their kids to school. They don't know that registration happens in February. I didn't know that. I missed it. So, you know, what is happening with that? So, I really look forward to a more robust policy that includes ability, inclusion, access, and that for your plan to really think about, how do we engage families who face the challenges that they do beyond just cultural and economics? So, thank you.
Thank you. Were you finished? Okay, good. We actually didn't turn your time on, so you probably were about done. So, we were, we were being gracious though. Did anyone want to comment with that, on that? If not, we're happy to.
I would just say, in regard to parent liaison staffing in all schools, we had a budget question that came through that we did respond to. I don't know if it's been posted at this time. It has been posted? Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. All right.
Next, we have Ms. Darinette Kofax.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here today. And I really appreciate your time and your stories and your anecdotes and about where we have been and where we're going. I think we, as a board, when we started engaging this on a previously constituted board, we realized we did a lot well, but we felt there were many more things we needed to do. Parent liaisons, we have in my Title I schools, you are the lifeline to so many families. I really, really appreciate that. I have been the liaison to the Title I group and your group is so engaged with so many parents and making certain that the families who have those needs in those schools, their needs are being addressed. But, as so many of my colleagues have stated, and here, on this board as well as the previous board, we are not always, and Ms. Smith, I think you talked about this, you indicated that we're not engaging in best practices constantly. So, that's why we're all here. I think this is a very big ball of yarn that is here and that we have to unwrap and rewrap. We just had our Public Engagement Committee meeting and we were talking about processes and we were talking about how to engage the family. I mentioned that we, one time, we had kind of a family engagement meeting as a school board-sponsored event. And we basically talked about what we have in this area. That worked for a while and then the board itself decided not to do that. But that can be another arm of what we need to do. I think that many of we talked about, a cultural shift is necessary because we have had great success and we can't leave out the linguistic piece and we can't leave out the issues in schools who are Title I schools. But we do have to broaden this definition. I think we all know that. I think we are at the, you know, at the start. I agree with my colleagues that, you know, I think the policy is a good start, but needs more time to engage. It's not a time to work, Smith, today. But, Madam Chair, this is a question for you or Dr. Braybrand. How would you like the board to chime in on the policy? That's one question. And then, before my time runs out, my other question and perhaps a next step is, people talked about the regional assistant superintendent and how they needed to partner with family engagement. And I think that's so important. So, as a next step, I would like to develop some kind of, I don't want to call it a plan because this is all a plan or a portion of the plan, to meet with the team and maybe identify a tiered approach by region, what schools need assistant. Because I think as a protocol, a tiered system, I think it's just very important because many, eight of my colleagues are new and you're just learning your schools. Ms. McLaughlin and I are the only ones who've been here for eight years and some of us have a really good handle on which schools could use this. But I think our regional assistant superintendents are the staff members who best know that and their team. And to then work with them as well as their board member to say, how is this tiered approach going to work and what is this new family engagement policy going to look like?
Ms. Darinette Kofax, it was so good. I had such a hard time interrupting you.
Thank you.
It was just so rich.
I appreciate that.
Really? No, no, no. I'm not being facetious. I'm really not trying to be funny. I was like, I hate to cut off the sentence, but your time was up at least 45 seconds ago.
Okay. Appreciate that.
Okay. We have Ms., oh, Dr. Braybrand would like to speak and then Ms. Omech.
Ms. Darinette Kofax asked a question. I just wanted to say to the whole board, we can talk about it at chairs. But, very, very quickly, I'd really like, based on the feedback I've heard already, to postpone any action on this policy until we have a little more time to do this community engagement. I would like to have the board vote on this policy prior to the end of this school year so that we can prepare our principals and schools over the summer for next school year, that we can have a policy in place, that our community knows it, our principals and school know it. So, maybe a slight postponement with a little bit more work and we can bring this back to the board in a work session or for action at a later time during this calendar year, is what I would throw out there for consideration.
Thank you, Dr. Braybrand. I think you have a vocal group. They will help us figure out how best to proceed, but I think that that's probably a good idea. Ms. Omech?
Could, if anybody wants to comment on the regional part that I asked about, the systems of approach and what your thoughts were on that?
If anyone would like to respond?
I support and appreciate the recommendation. And I think that while we tier academic achievement and we tier some other factors, social, emotional, it's something that we could work on.
Excellent. Good discussion, Ms. Omech?
Thank you. And thank you for all the work put into this. It's certainly a passion of mine. And I would argue one of the best returns on investment. If we put this in in advance, we can even be fiscally responsible to what we have to invest later. Perhaps a guiding question that I'd love for us to think about, you know, division-wide is, what is it that we feel, is it that we feel we're doing enough or does the community feel we're doing enough? And sometimes there's discrepancy there. So, I would just put that out there for us to keep in mind. So, question, you guys mentioned how we're shifting away from the parent liaison to specific communities model. I'm curious about what potential oversights, maybe if we've considered, I don't know what shortcomings or potential, you know, things to keep in mind to make up for or to consider as we're moving forward with that.
Hi. Dr. Anderson, I think, actually mentioned it before. There are sort of, when you start shifting away from a one model, there was a benefit of when you have someone that looks like you and speaks like you of being engaged. And so, there can be some unintended consequences when you shift the model. So, we have to be really thoughtful around our professional development and also creating relationships that transcend beyond a group that you identify with so that you have a relationship with somebody regardless. And that's when we define culture in FCPS, in that four-day cohort, and we define cultural proficiency as the ability to effectively engage with people that differ from us. And that's our goal, is how can we move beyond? So, that's the first step. I find someone that looks like me and speaks like me and I get a trusted relationship. But what we really want ultimately is that we are creating schools and relationships and environments where we can effectively partner with people who are different from us. And that's the crux of cultural proficiency. That does take some time and we are, we have provided some professional development for our parent liaisons around cultural proficiency. Again, sometimes we're limited to, these are folks that work hourly. So, to pull them in for professional development, we have to kind of decide, do we want them in a school? Do we want them with us? So, we are working through some of those challenges. And yes, we do need to consider, as we shift the model, what are the unintended consequences? Everyone deserves to feel welcome. Everyone deserves to feel seen. And people deserve to have someone that looks like them and sounds like them too. Those are all really important things. And in some of our schools, you know, we have a lot of ways to go around the diversity of staff too. And so, we recognize these things are all interconnected. They are not separate.
Thank you. Absolutely. Representation matters and we want to see that across the board. The other thing I wanted to ask about is how needs up to this point have been determined? You know, if there's been criteria and whatnot? And I'll comment on why that's important to me. But before I assume, I'd love to hear.
I think Dr. Doran spoke to currently how the needs have been determined based on free and reduced meal numbers as well as how many, the number of ELL students. That has been our formula for our parent liaisons.
So, beyond, I guess, legal or guidelines related to those, that's where we are. Right? Okay. So, I would love, you know, one thing that's division-wide, that's come up actually previously, is what data we're collecting. That's something to be mindful of, you know, in terms of identities and whatnot. There's a lot we don't know. And our community is so much more diverse than what those metrics were made for, right? So, we have to think about that. And I would put that out honestly as a follow-up action or something for how we think about what's on those forms that families fill out. And there are pros and cons. Sometimes it's bad to collect data. So, we want to be mindful of all of that. But, the other piece is the targeted universalism approach to all of this, right? This was a huge piece of my passion and I know we talked about this at the retreat with One Fairfax. But really, when we talk about these groups, all right, what does it feel like to be, you know, a Hispanic mother who doesn't speak English and has to work with the community? What does it feel like to be, I'm just going to put it out there because when you mentioned, well, that's not for me, I feel this way a little bit, a Muslim woman who walks up to the school and wants to talk to administrators and is treated in a particular way and doesn't feel respected? What does it feel like for a trans, you know, father to come in, right? Like, to walk the life of each person and think what resources and shortcomings does our system have for all of those identities? That's a critically important piece. And I know we talked about coming up with a list, but I think policy and action plan-wise, we kind of have to go through the mental step of thinking through each, each one that we can come up with, right? There's so many, including the soccer mom with, you know, two boys and, I mean, that too. So, the all levels of intersectionality.
Ms. Omech, I'm so sorry. We're adjusting to the clock over here. So, you got 45 free seconds. So, if you could get a response to your statement and we'd be happy to put you. So if you could get a response to your statement, and we'd be happy to put you as a go-back.
Sure.
Is that okay?
Yeah, I'd love to hear how we're doing that.
I can also defer. So one of the reasons we chose the welcoming atmosphere walkthrough is, in addition to that, sometime there's a panel, a parent panel component also in the culture proficiency cohort, the four-day, which is part of our equity work, there's also a parent panel in which we engage families from that community to come and talk. I think we can do more work in that area as well. One of the things, as we create this list, I caution us, is to consider, what's the best way to create a list? And I think, I know this wasn't necessarily the way everyone wants to hear it, but there is danger in creating a list. You know, people identify in lots of ways, and so as we think about creating who are the people, we could be unintentionally saying, if you're not on this list, you don't matter. And that negates all this work and all this time we're sitting here today, and I know that's what no one here wants. We all, actually, I feel very, I'm so excited to be part of this work, that I know we all want the same thing. We need to be careful around where we can be consistent and where we can be sort of universal, and then where are there places where we do need to be flexible and fluid so that we don't unintentionally leave someone out? And it sounds like we've been doing that unintentionally with certain groups, and we need to rectify that. We don't want to rectify it by doing it to others. And so it'll be very important that we slow down as we think about list creations, right? Lists have the possibility of segregating even more, and the whole point of this is bringing people together. Thank you for your snaps.
Okay, thank you so much. We have Ms. Pekarski.
I know we're running behind, so I'm going to be very quick. Thank you for that. 100% agree, and I'm really happy you said that. I, to save time, I'm going to get just to one comment that I'm a little bit worried about. As we expand this role of the parent liaison and we start to look at things differently, we still have a need for that linguistic connection. Our translation services are stretched thin. A lot of our parent liaisons are stretched thin. So I'm worried about that. While I agree, we need to be here, we probably should have been here a long time ago, so thank you, Dr. Braybrand. Very excited about it, but I think we need to be mindful, and I think we're going to have to have conversations around that. So thank you for being here.
Now, Ms. Pekarski, this is your first go-round. You get a full three minutes. You're good? Okay, all right. Did anyone want to, did anyone want to comment on what Ms. Pekarski said? Okay, all right, so, oh, we're going to, we're going to take our time, Elaine and I, and then we have had our first go- rounds. We are about 10 minutes out from when we should be finishing. So if we have an agreement, we will just trudge on, and perhaps if we could make our go-backs, what do you think, one and a half minutes, two, one and a half minutes? Then we can try to minimize this so that our folks aren't waiting for us if we have agreement. Okay, Ms. Tolan?
So obviously, I've been very engaged in the conversation since I've been falling off of my job of keeping the clock several times. So I appreciate everyone being here, and I appreciate all the comments. And I also have had the wonderful opportunity of working with many parent liaisons out in our schools, and have found them to be incredibly helpful in, you know, engaging parents and students across the board in new initiatives, like our, you know, environmental stewardship initiatives. So basically, my comments mirror some of what Dr. Anderson talked about, and I'm so excited you put that question in on the budget. I look forward to hearing the answer to that, because I think truly, as we expand our work, we may need to look at, you know, hopefully getting some more support.
Did anyone want to comment? Okay. So it's my turn? Do you have my three minutes?
I've got it.
I'm going to use all of it. Okay. I am really appreciative of this conversation, and I can say as the Title I liaison, that there really has been a broad outreach. If you come, and you're more than welcome to come to one of our meetings, which this gentleman over here leads very well, you will see that it's not as limited as what we would be concerned about. But I will say that this conversation says that we probably need to take a step back, but we also need to have some deeper discussion based on research. I really appreciated your comment about excluding people by virtue of trying to include others. And so I would really like to, as a board member, be able to see, what is the research out there? How do we get this done? What are the best practices to try to make sure that we're not having these unintended consequences, right? Because I'm really concerned about pitting one group against another, especially in the atmosphere that I think we're dealing with in some of our communities and politically, et cetera. So that would be a next step for me, is how can we get information on how best to proceed to make sure that we're having appropriate outreach and doing that in the best possible way? The other thing that this says to me, and this is a drum that I beat a lot, Dr. Braybrand knows, and that is, it also lends itself to how do we communicate what it is that we have and make sure that parents know? I think that there are some assumptions going on here, that there's certain, you know, groups that necessarily may feel certain ways, and I think every time a parent walks into school, no matter what they look like, they probably feel pretty alone, and so do the kids. And so we have to figure out how we break that down with a communications plan, so that would be my second next step. Let's see. I also would like, Dr. Braybrand, and you may have already been including this, but our Dr. Duran talking about how do we expand access to interpreters? It may be through the phone lines, that's one of the ways that we do it in the court system, but we do that language issue, I mean, we deal with, I know I deal with a number of different languages in the courts, and so we oftentimes will call and have an opportunity to speak that way. I talked about the communications plan. I'd love to see the job description of the current parent liaisons. The board has not seen that, just FYI for all of us. And those are my, those are my next step. I'm going to save my 10 seconds if anybody would like to respond. Push the button, push the button.
So we currently have access to the phone lines, and that's one of the action steps that we actually have in the action plan, the Family Engagement Action Plan, looking to expand those. Schools do have access to our phone lines for interpreters, but we need to examine the current processes and expanding those opportunities.
So I guess perhaps, and I'm not sure if somebody said this or not, because I'm trying to manage and listen, maybe we need a plan on how to create that greater access in the most effective way, is perhaps what we need to hear about. But I'm anticipating greater discussion on how to get this done.
We appreciate the idea of a communication plan, and that's something we would certainly consider in our implementation. I would also say that we have a new platform that we'll be rolling out, I think it's next year, called School-A-G. And we're looking at the family engagement capabilities within that tool so that we can certainly have that two-way communication, that it's not just the school pushing out information, but opportunities for families to share feedback with us. And more, please stay tuned on that one.
With respect to, as a next step, and I'm going to just wrap this up and move to the go- rounds, but we also would need the cost of expanding or how we can look in expanding the interpreters, access to interpreters. Okay, we have go-backs. Ms. Corbett Sanders.
Thank you, and I'll be brief. I'm going to actually bring attention to the actual draft policy. And when we look at the draft policy in the purpose section, we actually use the term inclusive of all families. That's the last time we use it. And so I will urge my colleagues to, and staff, to revise this, to include in the rationale under B, family engagement and inclusion there, and also add in under one, values their diverse cultural, linguistic, neurodiverse abilities, and inspire families to become active, so that we're more inclusive. Similarly, in item four, to include language about and opportunities for inclusion, and again in bullet six, or paragraph six. I would, along those lines, raise the concern that we are focused solely on the parent liaisons. The reality is, this is not a parent liaison-only initiative. We need to pull back from that and make it in everybody's job description to have the responsibility for effective engagement. So I will send some of this, and my last, real quick, is I would urge that we have this work also be the attention of the Governance Committee, since they have responsibility for policy development.
Any comments? Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you. I wanted to actually echo, sorry, hitting my mic, what Ms. Corbett Sanders said about making a family engagement and inclusion policy, I think would broaden the language of what we're talking about. So I appreciate your comments. I think we're on the same wavelength today on some of these, but I think, especially in, when you look at section under the rationale on B, and I think you just said that the school board supports a comprehensive, strength-based, capacity-building approach to family engagement and inclusion, I think would be a perfect word right there to add to that, and I think that broadens what we're talking about. I wanted to also talk a little bit, you talked about the welcoming walkthroughs, which I think is great. I think it'd be great to expand that to sort of systematic support for transition. When you have kids transitioning from elementary to middle, middle to high, I think talking about engagement at those key transition points, and maybe that's not part of the policy, but that's just something that popped in my mind that I think would be really important to talk about. And I was going to say the same thing. We talk about cultural proficiency and engagement for different than us, to Ms. Omech's point about feeling it. There are, there's a program in our schools that some parents have put in called Walk in My Shoes, that some schools do for elementary schools to know what it feels like to be a person with a disability and the sensory needs. And so it'd be great to have something like that broadened, you know, through cultural proficiency lessons. But I think the main point I wanted to make, which I'm so glad that Ms. Corbett Sanders brought up, was to expand the policy engagement and inclusion. And I'd like to talk, just to say, I think proactive, pull-in engagement and inclusion, in particular for communities for whom it may not be their base school, and it may not be the community they grew up in and know, and it may not be their, it may have been changed from their base school due to need for a population. I think we need to be really intentional about that population. So that's the last point I'm going to make.
Thank you, Ms. Sizemore-Hyther. Okay, the next, unless, do anyone want to comment?
I would, thank you so much for your comments. That's aligned with our thinking of sort of, again, additional next steps. There's so many things we would like to accomplish. We're thinking about where is there to start, but that's one of the conversations we had is around transition, the early childhood transition, the transition from elementary to middle, the transition from middle to high, and having some consistency. So I appreciate the comments around this family engagement is everyone's work, and so we have that content side of family engagement, but really, this is going to require the collaboration of many offices within FCPS, as this, this sort of is part of many offices. I've had the opportunity to sit down with a few different groups as a result of some great parent meetings that I have with some of you all to introduce me to other groups to think about what's the best way. I've sat down with Kids for Peace, and there's lots of great organizations out there, and trying to figure out what's best to bring to our division, and also honoring differentiation of what schools need, too. So thank you so much for that comment, and we will look into the Walk in My Shoes as we explore these different organizations.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin.
Just briefly, I wanted to let my colleagues know, I emailed our clerk and copied you all on four next steps that I would like to have included, and just that I really appreciate the comments that were made, that when we're talking about what it means to have global school settings and communities so all feel welcome. I mean, I think there are universal desires regardless of families' background. And Dr. Braybrand, I think I will just say, what I'm struggling with the most is that there's this whole presentation, today's conversation makes it sound like as if this is work that people have to be trained on, and I'm thinking, some of this, again, is when you're in the field of education, I mean, if we need to have a conversation with the deans of, you know, schools of education, whether it's George Mason is one in particular, where we get so many of our employees, I mean, George Mason is churning out master's degrees and doctoral degrees. And why are we having to, as we know how limited our funding is, to go into all this professional development that should be embedded in anyone going into the field of education? So I'd like to see us, you know, try and do what we can with our existing employees, but we should all be putting the pressure on the schools of education that are hiring, that we're hiring from, and saying, you know what, this is an absolute expectation.
Two quick things. I want this board to know, something new that we weren't doing before. I've gotten a commitment from the President of Nova and George Mason to meet with the two of them quarterly, and as needed, their senior staffs on topics of mutual interest between Fairfax County Public Schools, George Mason University, and Nova. One of the issues is a disconnect between what is being trained by both teachers and administrators now and what we need to go over. Last year, I went to Congress on behalf of CASL, the Social Emotional Learning National Group. Only two states in the country include social emotional learning for teacher preparation, only two, and Virginia's not one of the two. So we are not even, we are spending too much time, as you said, Ms. McLaughlin, going back and training on things people haven't had in the first place that would assume automatically should be a part of it. So we're going to work to start to redesign those programs for both teachers and administrators and scale up. And to be honest, I do think, the Fairfax piece in me is that, once we know area of focus, this is something we can scale quickly and get people to do well. This welcoming walk has been there since I was a principal, and it's great, but you got to do it. It's shifting the culture from invitational to, this is just like doing our, oh my God, what's our security? Tabletop, right? Culturally, we're not saying you're not doing safety and security well, but we need to train on it every year. We're not saying you don't do welcoming culturally responsive environments well, but you need to each, because teachers change, your staff changes, your front office, principals change, and we need to have it as just part of a regular, you go to the doctor to get a checkup. We're moving from invitational to required as part of the feedback loop to do better, and this is an area where we still have room for growth, and this has been a very helpful conversation for us today.
Thank you.
And Renee just shared with me that there's only one state in the U.S. that provides family engagement in their teacher preparation programs, and that's Nevada.
Wow, I guess we got to go there. Okay, next, Ms. Kofax. You're good? Okay. Dr. Anderson.
Trying to be fast, but I'm losing all my time here. I know we had a lot of different conversations, but I do want to say two things before I ask my question. I really appreciate to have something to respond to, because I think as a collective of 12, it's really hard for us to kind of build together. So as much as possible, and I know it may have some different impact on staff time, but having at least some basic document to respond to is super helpful to me instead of us crafting it from the ground up. And also, Ms. Smith, I so appreciate your comment. I love that candid, honest feedback. It may not be what we all want to hear, but it has to be what is fact, so thank you for being bold to share that with us. In terms of being bold, I want to say I'm a little concerned about a couple of things. As we're talking about expanding the roles of parent liaisons, expanding the policy, I worry a little bit in terms of us losing its basic tenants. Because when we add too much, we don't do it well. It's just too broad, it doesn't, it's not robust. And also, speaking for my community, where that language piece, it's already insufficient in terms of parent liaison hours that we have right now. We could double what the Mason District Schools get and still be stretched. So I just worry in terms of losing the real essence of that family engagement, because all of our schools are Title I schools, pretty much, but one. And we know we have some of those responsibilities that we have to respond to, so I wouldn't want for this to now dilute what those schools are responsible for. want for this to now dilute what those schools are responsible for doing in Mason District. So I just want us to be mindful of not stretching ourselves too much to the point where we don't do any of it well enough.
Here, here. All right.
Can I speak to that real quickly? And I agree wholeheartedly with what you're saying, and like I said, coming from two large secondary schools within FCPS with two very different backgrounds, I will tell you that even working in the Robinson background, if you look at our data, we're a high-achieving school and we do well, but if you dig deep in our data, we have gaps and we are not doing well. And we also need to bring in our parents. You would think that we have the high parent engagement, but it's the same thing. If I could have three Ruths, I don't know that I'd still have enough. I think just using our resources, but also knowing that every school is different, and so being very careful of what you put in the policy, because every school needs parent engagement support and help, but what it looks like at each school, whether it's a Title I or a high-achieving school, it's still needed, but it's a different context in what you're using your resources for.
Thank you. Next, we have Ms. Amesh.
Thank you.
Your name taken down.
To Dr. Anderson's point, I want us to be mindful that we don't want to set this up for failure, and we have to keep in mind resources are going to be a critical component. I mean, I look forward to seeing, interviewing our budget amendments and whatnot. I hope to present some that will support this work and hope we can build on that. The other thing is, I would love to see the word proactive in this policy more so. And in saying that, you know, we talked about the best practices point, which I appreciate, you know, your pushback in that and finding what's truly right out there in the literature and what we know. Things to consider, I know the organizing world, community organizing, also has many tools, and other jurisdictions do home visits, right? Or minimum touchpoints between teachers and families, similar to IEP model, believe it or not, right? But in a way that's not as rigorous and legally bound. Or going out to meet people where they are, community centers, shelters, houses of worship, where the community already is. I'd love to see us thinking about that, and I throw these out as points for consideration, because I know we want to make sure that it aligns well with what works and what the data shows us. Finally, I think it's up to us also to lead by example. We talked about childcare and these kinds of things that can provide those opportunities that Title I does. As a school board, I don't know where we're at with that, so I just want to put that out there. And I think this is going to require significant collaboration. There's a nexus here between the comms, like John Torrey's office and this office, right, to make sure that we don't have overlaps that could be more efficient if we work together, and being proactive, again, in providing those resources to everyone, so.
Just a couple of points. And John's office was very much involved in the development of the Family Engagement Survey and helping us with communication. Kathleen Thomas is in the back, I see her. Very much involved in ensuring that we were communicating frequently and with the family communities, all of our family communities. Additionally, I wanted to point out that Renee and her team had gone out to a number of our faith-based organizations to seek feedback prior to the development of the Family Engagement Survey. Renee, would you like to just share a couple of comments about those meetings that you held?
So we provided focus groups in a lot of our diverse communities. In each region, we met, we went out into the community. I think one of the feedbacks and adjustments were made was around our calendar, and the adjustment of our religious holidays on our calendar. So we brought that feedback to Dr. Duran, but I think that was overall the majority of the feedback that we were provided by our families.
Thank you. Okay, we have Ms. Pekarsky.
Just sitting here, listening to the conversation, what Dr. Anderson said, you know, there are different levels, I think, expectations of family engagement, starting at the top. But at the end of the day, family engagement really, I think, is about the relationships that our families are going to form within their schools. And oftentimes, those relationships, the most meaningful ones are the classroom teachers. So what this plan is going to look like, what the expectations are from our teachers who are in there every day, I'm very interested to see, because we don't want this to be, you know, we want this to be organic to a certain level in order for it to be meaningful. We don't want it to be a check, we did this, we had this meeting, you know? We don't want to do that. Every community is different. So I would like to see, and if you want to speak a little bit, to what that teacher role is going to be, or what you're envisioning within a school. I'm very interested in that.
Sure, I agree. I think often we always, I think we should, anytime we come together, talk about, really, where all the magic happens is in the classroom. So often, we can all sit around and talk grand plans, but really, it all comes down to teacher relationships with kids and all of the things that we're speaking about, whether it's equity, cultural proficiency, academic support, social emotional, teachers matter a lot. So where we started first was for that consistency component of what are some division-level things we can commit to? And I think Dr. Ivy spoke to, we recently met with the RAS and EEP to say, so then what will this translate to schools? And then from there, what are some expectations? So we were just beginning, though, a conversation with our RAS and our EEP to say, if this is what we commit to as a division, where might we have some consistency in schools? And then, to your point, exploring maybe the tiering, or what can it look like on a teacher level? One of the ways we are approaching that first is to build that cultural proficiency of our teachers. Relationships require you to get to know every student in a deep and meaningful way, and sometimes there may be some biases or background experiences that can inhibit you from doing that unintentionally. So part of this work is connecting the cultural proficiency training to our teachers to think about the processes they're doing. So very soon, all of our teachers in FCPS, every single one of them, will engage in our cultural proficiency training Module Five, which is on cultural responsive decision-making. We're excited to hear that you will also receive this professional development to see, and we share a tool in that professional development that you'll hear about, about the way you think about making decisions. But we do have more work to do. What does this look like at the classroom level?
Thank you so much. Okay, we have gone through all of our go-bangs, except mine. As everybody, make sure you have a list of your own next steps, and we'll be going over them in just a second. I'm glad to see this emphasis on continuous improvement, and I think I would like to see built in to this plan is how we regularly look at these issues. What are our deficiencies? What are our strengths? What are our weaknesses? So that the board has a regular opportunity to focus on this engagement, which I think is critical. I also wanted to give you an opportunity, because I know I asked this question before about disaggregation of information, and I know I was given a reason as to why the experts don't recommend that, and that might be some information you want to share here.
So in our work with K-12 Insight, the researchers had recommended at the beginning of the survey administration that we not have identifiable demographic data to encourage the greatest amount of participation. However, as we think about and plan for the administration of the survey in spring of 2021, we would take into consideration this idea of including demographic data as an option for our families, and then we can look at the disaggregated results from there.
Thank you. And then just lastly, I think the surveys are great, but they may not be the end-all and be-all with respect to getting information. Not everybody's going to respond in that way, so I would like to perhaps, as a next step, kind of look at other ways that we can communicate with various groups and open the door to the extent that we can, because I do think there is that universal need to belong, and it doesn't, it's a nay, it doesn't matter who we are.
Can I just mention, as Renee and her team had conducted the focus groups, I think it's time to do that work again and to ensure that we are reaching out to as many of our family groups, stakeholders as possible, so that we can get some anecdotal data that will help us to inform our practices.
Thank you, so much. So that wraps up our discussion. I want to thank everyone. I think this was a really good discussion, and I think it will be ongoing, Dr. Brabran. I'm sure chairs will be discussing it, and hopefully we'll come up with some mechanisms, even as board members have ideas, that they can share those so that we, because this is really critical, right? That we have this ongoing, and people feel as though we're really focused on this. It's so awesome. Can we have the next steps put up? I can keep talking if you need me to. Okay, all righty. All right, everybody take a look. Are we at the right number? Okay. If everyone could take a look at where their name is and make sure that they're comfortable with what is up there, starting at number 264, and then I will just poll our board members and make sure, if there's no correction to yours, then I will ask board members if we are okay as including that as a next step. So starting with 264, Ms. Corbett Sanders, is that, does that convey your concerns? All right, board members, how many people can support that? Perfect. All right, and then I'm assuming number 265 is the same. Is everyone comfortable? Okay, and Ms. Sizemore Heiser, can you look at 266 and 267 through, yeah, 268? We'll just look at those as a block, 269, 270?
267 is more, consider the possibility of aggregated data going forward, since I know we didn't do it previously, so it wasn't necessarily providing from last time, but consider.
Right. And if you don't mind, I think we probably, considering the information we've been given with respect to their possibly being an impact on whether people participate or not, we may want to talk about. So I like the idea of changing it to considering the possibility. Would you mind also adding other ways of getting this data? Trying to find other ways.
I'd be very open to that. And I agree with you that surveys are not always.
Right, everybody doesn't respond to that.
One thing I was, is it possible to include preschool in this as well, or we really want to stick to K-12 in terms of parent engagement?
We're charged with K through 12.
I just wanted, I just wanted to, that's fine. But yeah, I think, that's good.
Ms. Corbett Sanders, did you have a comment?
Instead of possibility of providing disaggregated, aggregated data, we actually have to request, we have to request the data and then provide it in that format. So it's consider the possibility of requesting more unique identifiers in our, in our profile or something, in our surveys.
Okay, I'm going to go with our catch-all, which is basically, Dr. Brabran, do you understand what we're saying? Okay, we'll keep it moving. All right, so Ms. Sizemore Heiser, we have 266 through 270 for you. Are you comfortable with all of those? Has all board members had an opportunity to read all of those?
268 is a repetition, I believe, of the one above at 265, so if you want to combine the two.
I can't see 263.
You said 265.
Yeah, I don't mind, we can just, what I was looking for was ensure, because 265 is about the professional development. I was talking about the definition of cultural proficiency. So it's related, absolutely, but it's not.
I think it's the same, it's, I was trying to capture that when I made it, so if you just want to add it in, then.
Yeah, let's do it, so include our cultural proficiency definition and professional development to include neurodiversity, common students with disabilities.
Okay.
I have a question about that.
Ms. Amesh?
Yeah, so there are these two points, and I believe there are some more coming up about specific categories or things to keep. I thought our understanding from staff was that we wanted to keep culture broad. I don't know, I mean, that's, I'm just flagging this, because we were, there were two perspectives here, and if they're going to follow up on it, but they're informing us that their best practice understanding is not to do that, I don't, I don't know.
Well, I think, okay, and I'm also looking at this as an ongoing discussion, because we have made it clear, I think, and Dr. Brabran acknowledged, that we're going to need to continue to speak into this, what this will mean for our community. So I wouldn't see this as defining and cutting off other opportunities.
I would just make a distinction. What I heard is, we need to expand the definitions to be more inclusive, but then we need to be careful about standardizing our stakeholder list of who we're engaging or not engaging, so there's not exclusion. So I see the definition feedback as expand that, but then be careful about whether we come up with a set list of who's reviewing this policy or not, so that there's not this idea of exclusion.
Which is why I said it's an ongoing discussion. We're not cutting off options here. We're really looking at the basis of being able to have a continuing discussion. So if, okay, all right. So if we can go from 265 to 269, are you comfortable with those, Ms. Sizemore Heiser?
Yeah, I just want to explain, 268 is that communication, not just in a language, but a format, that goes to accessibility issues. That's what I was trying to get at, because the policy itself is in a language they can understand, but it doesn't say format, and some of the other policies I looked at had format in there as well.
Okay, so if everyone is comfortable with the ones we just discussed, just raise your hand, please. Perfect, let's move on to Mr. Fritsch, has 270 and 271. Are you comfortable with those, Carl?
There are legal issues with 271. I suggest that be discussed in closed session.
Okay, so we will pull that for a closed session discussion. And 270?
It's great.
Okay, all right. I'm assuming every, you can object, otherwise I'm going to keep moving. Okay, Ms. Kofax?
Let me just say on Carl's, I know we had two different strains of thought about the stakeholder engagement. I mean, maybe staff can go back and look. The tension was, if we provide a draft of who, then who's not included on there? But at the same time, are we missing low-hanging fruit when we engage our community? And maybe we need to wrestle with that as staff and figure out how to bring it back.
Dr. Brabran, I would say we need to wrestle with that together, because we certainly, I think this board wants to have some input with respect.
All right, well, why don't we leave it like that, and then we can bring back some feedback.
Ms. Amesh, I do think there was two conversations, and tell me if I'm wrong, about defining culture. If you define it with a certain set of groups, then who are you leaving out? I do think there were both conversations, as well as stakeholders. My concern is, and maybe it's, I look at next steps, is how do we maybe leave it broad, so we're not making it narrow, but we're also not, we're also being intentional in our lesson development.
To that point, can we edit 270 by removing standardization and changing it to provide draft of systemic approach for external stakeholder engagement? That way, we can do both in the same thing if we want to, or we can do broad.
Okay. You support that? Okay, all right. Only raise your hand if you have an objection, otherwise we're going to keep driving. Okay, Ms. Kofax, you're comfortable with your language? Okay, 272, Ms. Amesh, are you comfortable with that?
I would just add, with regards to information collection, or, you know, what we get from families, yeah.
That's what I was thinking, where we.
Is this one more around making sure we get the voices and that surveys are not enough? Or is this more so that we can understand who our population is, just so we know how to respond? Because I think those are two different things. One is what impact are we having? The other one is, do we even know who our community is? And so, which one were you?
Yeah, my original point was the latter. Both are valuable, but yeah.
All right, so Ms. Amesh, I am going to ask a question on 273. I'm not sure I understand what you're getting at there.
So that's where I was saying it's a priority to think of how this impacts various groups and to have that be a systemic approach, once we develop a policy or a strategy, to kind of go through that mental process of thinking through our oversights.
Are you talking about a plan, a communications plan?
No, 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 no. So with the action plan that we develop, as a part of the policy, for us to take the targeted universal approach and ensuring that we've covered our bases essentially with a variety of groups and needs. So that would be incorporated within, whether it's in shaping the policy, to put that as a priority and consideration, to ensure compliance with one Fairfax and whatnot, or in the action plan, to delineate how that, how the thought process to ensure we meet that has been. Or when, in the action plan, to delineate how that, how the thought process to ensure we meet that has been put into place.
What I'm.
The next step is investing information or suggesting a certain approach?
So perhaps clarity on how that's incorporate, how that is being incorporated or included. Targeted universalism. That approach, right? So clarity on how that's being included in the strategizing or in the policy.
Why don't you let, I think, let staff take a crack at it. And if we come back and it's not what you all want, or what you want, let us know. But I understand what you're saying. And I do.
Okay.
I do.
Alright, are there other next steps? If everyone's comfortable with that, we'll just keep moving.
Ask, we're using a term that is not widely understood.
Yes.
I think that's the issue here.
So, I think the issue is that. It's the framework that is not widely understood. So if I could suggest to Ms. Omech that you, that the request from staff to define what targeted universalism is and how it might be used in providing a systematic or systemic approach to our engagement and inclusion strategies.
Sure. I think you mentioned, you know, cultural iceberg and one. I believe you guys understand in the literature what this is.
Right.
We definitely understand, but I think to Ms. Corbin Sanders' point, when this is a public document. So in our answer, what I would say is, we could describe the elements there. I mean, us defining it, we're not, it's not one of our terms that we're putting out there as a term for us. But in terms of the response to the type of framework, we certainly can explain that in the answer, so that anyone reading the answer would know what it is based on our response. Would that help, Ms. Corbin Sanders?
That's precisely what I'm trying to get at, is the need to understand that when we engage our community, they need to know the terms that we're using.
Got it.
Right, of course. And we might not put this in the document that we come up with, but it's for staff, to inform our strategy and approach.
Right, but she's just, she's clarifying this because it's a public document.
We understand, and we definitely will do that.
If you're comfortable with that, we'll move on to 274? If everyone is comfortable with that, okay? I think that's pretty self-explanatory. Okay. So, all of mine are 275, 6, 7, I'm just reading them quickly. Okay? Is everyone comfortable with those? If so, 279 and 80 for Ms. Corbin Sanders. Oh, those are just corrections for the 279, so I think those were understood, correct? Okay. And then 280?
Adding inclusion also in part of, I wonder if we can add that to 279, if you're okay with that, Ms. Corbin Sanders? It was under.
It says inclusion, N-word inclusion after family engagement. It's up there, 279.
No, what Ms. Sizemore Heiser is requesting is to actually change the title of the policy to include inclusion. Is that correct, Ms. Sizemore Heiser?
Professional learning and family inclusion and engagement.
So, I think we don't have.
I don't know if I have enough understanding to say that I will vote for that. Because I think we need to discuss this a little bit further, because.
I think part of the problem, Ms. Sizemore Heiser, at least for me, is that the term inclusion has a specific meaning in certain communities and not others. And so, I'm not sure, perhaps that is part of what we need to discuss as we go forward, to, as to whether that's the direction this entire policy is taking.
Well, I mean, I hear what you're saying and I hear what you're saying also, but I know that I have seen from the state level on down, the word inclusion being used well beyond the disability community when looking at policies of engaging people. So perhaps what we can do is, instead of saying change the title, but say, look at including inclusion policies or.
I think what I'm comfortable with, and people let me know what you think, as we try to go to lunch. But I think that this is a discussion.
I agree. Eileen, what you just deleted was actually a specific section, so.
Yeah. I think this is a different discussion, if we could hold on to that.
No, we're, thanks.
If we could table that for a separate conversation, because I just worry that we're trying to make every policy the policy for everything. We can still keep the basic standards of family engagement and inclusiveness, which I think some parts of it already speaks to. I would like to have more conversation on this before I vote for this. Okay. Or may I ask?
So, one of my next steps in that same email was to refer this to the Governance Committee, because that's really where those discussions should be taking place. So if we take that and bring it up above, and then, instead of ensure the draft policy, consider modifying the draft policy. And that way, it's put in, you know, we've captured some of the thoughts, but the work of the Governance Committee will unpack.
Are you looking to the Governance Committee to kind of flush that out and then include additional board discussion? That's how I'm reading that. Ms. McLaughlin?
Yeah, process-wise, I thought, based on the conversation in this work session, including Dr. Brabran, recognizing all of these next steps are because what we've got as a draft policy is not even remotely necessarily where the board is. So sending something to governance to flesh out, the reference to draft policy is giving me pause. As far as I'm concerned, that draft policy is a very liberal term, because I don't even know that our draft policy is going to look like that. So I think there's a lot more work before it just goes to governance to.
Okay, Ms. Darnett Kofax?
I was going to say the same thing, and then I thought we kind of had come to the conclusion that we weren't wordsmithing at this point, the policy.
Right. And that's, I think what I'm uncomfortable with is changing that particular language with that is a word that means a lot to certain communities, is really a policy shift that warrants additional conversation. At least that's where I am.
Fine with that.
And I think perhaps we can table the discussion as to where it goes and how we proceed. But for this discussion with respect to how we write 279, I am sensing from the members here today that that adding, changing the name of this policy, which would actually indicate a policy change, is not what we're, we need to have further discussion. Is that correct? Okay.
Yes. It doesn't matter what the language is.
It doesn't matter.
Okay. If we can, because I don't want to get, yes, I don't want to prolong this conversation, but I also think that may require additional discussion that is not designed for the next step, for next steps. Yes, Ms. Kofax?
Just for clarity then, the policy at this point, the draft policy, will remain the same. Nothing's going to governance and it's just coming back to the full board. That's my understanding. Am I correct or incorrect?
Yeah, I do not believe we're making a decision as to where this policy is going next. We're simply correcting the next step language with respect to. Okay. So, I believe we're just changing the language here to make the corrections without actually making a policy change. And we're also not making a decision with respect to what the next, where that is going to governance. We're not making that decision.
Not making any decisions at this point. Okay.
Okay. Pull off 280. Okay. So, with respect to 280, I'm hearing comments that transition support is perhaps discussed. Ms. Corbin Sanders, did you want to expand?
I was not just talking about transition for students with disabilities. I was talking about as the engagement of students as they're coming into a new school setting and families coming into new school, provides, like, and I was relating it to the welcome walk or whatever, I think, the title. So I wasn't, you know, necessarily thinking, and to be fair, the transition for students with disabilities is actually post-secondary transition. There, I've been told by DSS that what we, what we in the discipline will call transition IEP, which what they commonly refer to IEPs going from sixth to middle school, is not actually transition IEPs. The only transition IEPs are those that are starting at age 14 to build to post-secondary.
Ms. Sizemore Heiser?
I'm just trying to explain.
I know, but I, we really need to, if we could, I think part of the problem is that, again, that transition word is kind of, has a certain meaning.
Perhaps we could say, include systematic support for students transitioning, which is what I say is transitioning from, all students transitioning from one school setting or to another. So, you know. As a parent of a child who is transitioning from one school to the next, there have been various efforts that have been in place to help us to do that. As my kid leaves fifth grade to go to sixth grade, and now here, which is middle school, there's parent, there's opportunities for the student, there's opportunities for the parents. And so.
So, okay. In the interest of brevity, this may or may not be supported. So I'm going to ask, who can support that next step? Raise your hand, please. Okay. Then we need to remove it. 280, Ms. McLaughlin? That's another school district. Okay. Alright.
And board members.
Okay.
And I have sent around the, to the whole board, the family engagement survey data that was released last July, just so everybody has it. But no, I agree, it should be posted.
It needs to be posted for the public to access.
Okay. Alright, if everyone is in agreement with those, did you have another comment?
I just want to draw, I just want to draw Dr. Brabran's attention to this one, where it's saying things like, post it. I just can't emphasize enough, when we are going to have a work session like this and staff is referencing the family engagement survey and data, that's the kind of stuff that all needs to be in one place. It's not for the public or the board to go hunt around and figure out the last time we did something. So I would just ask, anytime we're going to talk about prior work that your staff has done, and it's a lot of really hard work and valuable work, get it all posted to Board Docs in the same place.
Okay, understood. I'm sorry, I lost, we moved down. Did everybody have an opportunity to look at Ms. McLaughlin's? Did anyone have any questions about that, so that we can move on? Alright, 284 and.
We just discussed, I think that was combined with Ms. Corbin Sanders, so we can take that one.
Okay, so we're taking 284 off. Explore intentional measures that include. Okay. Alright, so is 283 the last one we have? Are we still writing?
Yeah, I sent these, I mentioned these throughout that weren't included.
So, as I, I thought we had something up there before, because we talked about, one of the things that I talked about was going beyond the actual survey. So 284, I'm not, do we need that?
It was added to one of the ones that I had about the.
Yeah, we did. I mean, just in the interest of time, I know we've discussed it.
Please, Kamara, I'm going to offer a process solution here that we've done in prior work sessions, that board members, just read it if it's accurate. Then we refer to the superintendent and in chairmans, the vice chair and chair will review. If there's any next steps here that they can't get done, or it's just unreasonable or whatever, but we don't need to, we've got outside counsel, I think we're fine, just post it and send it to chairs and vice chair.
I think, yes. If we could, if we could do that, Ms. Omech, if we could allow. How many more do we have?
No, these are points I mentioned and they weren't reflected in the action steps or next steps, so I sent them over. I don't have a problem with them being reviewed by staff.
We have the two of them, we took notes on it and they're related to the plan, not the policy, the first 84 and 85. We have those notes, so we would, we responding. And the last one is a simple request on budgetary. So we did have those, we had them.
So that we advocate for you as well. So thank you.
Okay.
And 285 do not need to be there. 286 does. Is that correct? Because I think every, go ahead.
84 and 85 are about the plan itself and we have notes on that, we're not the policy yet. So, to your point of this is about the policy only, they don't need to be there. But if you want us to just reference it as we're looking at the plan, that's fine.
And I think we included both elements throughout this thing.
Okay, if staff understands what's up there, I think we're going to leave that.
We understand.
And thank you, Ms. Corbin Sanders. Do we need to go into closed session?
Do. The board will now make a motion to go into closed meeting to, one, discuss and consider personnel matters, specifically the assignment, appointment and/or salaries of specific public employees pursuant to Section 2.23711A1 of the Code of Virginia. And two, consult with legal counsel regarding litigation or specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel pursuant to Section 2.2371A7 and AA of the Code of Virginia, specifically a personnel matters. And B, Doe versus School Board Case Number 119CV00917. Do I have a motion? Motion made by Ms. McLaughlin, seconded by Ms. Sizemore Heiser. All those in favor? Aye, that's unanimous. We are now in closed.
I don't think so. No, I just think we're all soaking out the process. And you have the same struggle I have, right? Just a lot of my stuff is taken out. It's going to the plan as opposed to the policy. And so I think that's where something's struggling. And like, they need to catch on when I send either, I emailed them and sent it to them, that's why they had it.
And she's like, she just sent it to us. I sent it like 10 minutes ago. Don't tell me you just sent it.
But like, no, I don't think so. I just think that it's a struggle, because we still want to get into the plans, like the details of these things. I have the same issue, right? And so just.